All right, welcome everyone to the February second, two thousand twenty-three school committee meeting. In keeping with an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. Signed into law by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom attendance by board members will be remote and attendance shall count towards quorum. This meeting will be broadcast live on Facebook and recorded on Ecat. This meeting is open to the public and we'll take questions via the chat feature at the bottom of your screen. Please make sure to include your full name and address and we'll do our best to answer all questions. However, we will not read questions that have already been answered. All right. So first up is the regular school committee meeting minutes. From January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Any questions, comments, edits? Okay, can I get a motion to accept these regular school committee meeting minutes from Thursday, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three?
O'Neil, so moved.
Start star second.
Roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Yes.
Star, yes.
Excellent. All right, next up is the workshop minutes from Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. I actually have an edit when in the call the meeting to order towards the end. It was not a an agenda that had public comment. So I didn't make the comment about the meeting was open to the public and the questions and how to present them. So if we can just take that out. Does anyone else have a question, comment? Hey Nancy. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the in school committee workshop minutes from Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three with a noted edit?
Star so moved.
Just can I get a second?
O'Neil, second.
Roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca staying.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Okay, excellent. Um, and the last set is executive session meeting minutes from Thursday, January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Does anyone want me to hold them for edits? Okay, that I'm looking for either a motion to approve and release or prove and not release it this time.
I star I move to approve but not release at this time.
Can I get a
Wasn't second.
All right, roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, personnel change retirements, grade five teacher at RO, grade two teacher at Blanche Ames, Dr. Cabral.
Hello.
Hello.
So our first teacher retirement this evening is a teacher at Richardson Olmstead. Unfortunately, she won't be able to join us this evening. But this grade five teacher is Leslie Socorso. She began her career in the Eastern Public Schools as a part-time special education teacher at the Eastern Junior High School in October of nineteen ninety-eight. She became full-time right away nineteen ninety-nine and then transferred from EJHS to what was then the Richardson School. In two thousand four, she transferred from a special education teacher to a grade five classroom teacher where she remains today. She will be completing twenty-five years in the district and plans to retire at the end of the school year on June thirtieth. Um, Leslie um is a phenomenal educator. Um, once again, we have a lot of experience going out the door. Um, however, you're going to read her letter and get a good idea of why. And I'm sure it's not shocking. Um, and so we wish her very well and she's going to be dearly missed. She's a wonderful colleague and um as many people know, a beloved teacher.
Okay. Um, Dear Dr. Cabral, this year marks my twenty-fifth year teaching in the Eastern Public School System. It's been a pleasure to work with such dedicated team of professionals. But at this time, I feel it's time for me to retire. I will complete the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year before officially retiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. During my time uh working in the Eastern Public Schools, I've been fortunate to have been able to work a variety of roles. I began at the East of Middle Schools of Special Education Department in the Special Education Department before I transferred to Richardson Olmstead as a learning specialist. After a number of years, I made the decision to become a fifth grade classroom teacher and I've enjoyed working with students in an inclusion setting. I consider myself blessed to have been able to work with many different age groups of students and settings over the years. Preparing fifth graders for the challenges of middle school has been a role that I've enjoyed the best. Watching students grow and gain confidence during the course of the year has been very rewarding. At this time, I would like uh like to be able to spend more time with my family and join my grandchildren, not to mention gardening, returning to the gym and finding some new activities to pursue. I've been pleased to work with the school district that's been so progressive. Countless changes have taken place over the years, especially during these past few years. Educators have needed to embrace change and have flexible mindset. I have so appreciated the transparency you have with our staff. As a teacher, I have always felt supported. This feeling of support helps help to foster a number of friendships at the building level. Sincerely, Leslie Socorso. I don't know if anyone has a comment, Nancy?
Yes, thank you. Um, I did work with Leslie at the uh Eastern Junior High School back twenty-five years ago. So uh she's a lovely person, great worker. I know uh Mrs. Siegel and Leslie make a great team in fifth grade over at RO. And uh she will definitely be missed and Leslie, you're going to enjoy retirement. It is wonderful. Okay, you can go on a vacation whenever you want to so. And your grandchildren will be very happy to have you around all the time. So congratulations, Leslie, I'm happy for you.
Not to be redundant, but we lose more great people to grandchildren than anything else, but it's the most worthy cause, so we understand.
Anyone else? Okay. Um, can I get a
Yeah, just quickly, I didn't, my, my kids didn't have Mrs. Corso, but her reputation certainly expanded well beyond her classroom. And I know that she uh was beloved by her students and their families and will be very much missed as part of um as as part of RO.
Anyone else? Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the retirement of Leslie Socorso with regrets?
So move DeLuca.
We'll get a second.
Wasn't second.
Roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yeah.
Star, yes.
All right, and congratulations. And back to you, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. Our next colleague is also a great loss to the district. Uh Vivian Capabianco. She was a long-term substitute at first at Parkview Morale Hall in nineteen ninety-seven. Um, from January to June in nineteen ninety-eight, she was a long-term sub at Parkview as a grade two teacher. She was then a long-term sub at Center School as a grade one teacher before she was appointed in nineteen ninety-nine to her position as grade two teacher at Parkview. She has um been a mentor to many over the years with her wonderful experience and expertise. She also plans to retire on June thirtieth after a total of twenty-six years in the district. Uh Vivian, another amazing professional with tremendous experience, but um her positivity really stands out to me. Um, we were so happy that she was able to move with us to the new building and she had a smile on her face every time I saw her, no matter how difficult the circumstances have been um for someone to um you know, to make that kind of a move right before retirement. She certainly could have been um really salty about that. And the fact that she's doing all this work just to um kind of pack up and go. Um, however, she showed the same level of perseverance, personality and professionalism that she, oh, there she is, hello. Uh, that she's always shown us um in this endeavor as well. And so uh it wasn't a huge surprise, but we are very sorry to see her go. But again, so happy for her and so happy for um, you know, best wishes in her retirement. It's very well deserved.
Dear Dr. Cabral, after more than thirty years of being part of the Eastern Public Schools as a parent, PAC volunteer, long-term substitute and full-time teacher, I plan on retiring at the end of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Teaching is my second career prior to teaching. I worked in the corporate world at IBM for ten years. Professionalism and respect for the individual was at the forefront of the IBM culture values every organization should live by. It was a fine career, but for me, something was missing. I did not realize what it was until the first day I set foot in Parkview School. When my oldest of three sons started kindergarten in Karen Danielson's class. There is an energy and excitement about being with children that can never be matched in the corporate environment. I knew at that moment I wanted to be part of the school world. I've been teaching second grade at Parkview, Parkview from the beginning and have been fortunate to have worked with um colleagues who have both inspired me and generously shared with me their own best practices. Teaching in the incredible new Blanche Ames Elementary School is such a fulfilling way to complete my career. I am now ready to start a new phase of my life and explore new possibilities. Sincerely, Vivian Capabianco.
See that positivity?
It is true.
Caroline?
Um, I just want to say that Vivian is one of those teachers that when parents would find out in the late summer, what T, you know, who they were, or their child was having for a teacher at Parapute in second grade. They would honestly say they felt like they run, won the lottery. So I, I know this is a huge loss for us. I think that one of the things that aside from being just a natural with children, one of the things that Vivian, from what I heard frequently contributed was just a wonderful sort of um effort to promote um sort of joy among her colleagues. And also she was a wonderful resource for her colleagues because she had some really special teaching talents. So I agree with Leisha, this is a huge loss to the district.
Thank you. Nancy?
So Vivian, nice to see you. And again, uh I've known Vivian for a long time and her boys and um just, you know, an amazing teacher as you, she is and always upbeat and goes with the flow and things change and she changes with them. And if you said to pivot, she'll pivot. So uh Vivian's great. Congratulations on your retirement. I hope you enjoy it. You will, you will enjoy it.
I hear that from everybody.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, just quickly, if I may, um, um, I'm so grateful. Just the timing is right, the timing is right for me. Um, and I, I just, one quick thing, and I tell this to anyone who's listened. And I don't use the word lightly, but I truly had an epiphany when I walked into that elementary school for the first time. Just the energy, the colors, the smell, the, the, you know, the vibe of a school. I'm like, oh, my gosh, you can't, I mean, in the corporate world, you can't dance, you can't jump around, you can't emote. You know, all the things that little kids do so naturally, it just seemed like, um, okay, this is it. And, and again, just very quickly, um, I sort of came of age in the late seventies, early eighties. My mother was a teacher and she said to me, Viv, you don't have to be a teacher. Because when she grew up, it was as a teacher secretary nurse, you can do anything, you don't have to be teacher. So I said, okay, so that's kind of what pushed me in that direction. And which was a great time for women to promote and all of that. Um, again, but for me, something, something was missing that energy. Um, when you see a kid so excited that they jump up and down when they talk, right? Or they'll just, they just can't stand, it's contagious. Um, and you feed off of that, especially with little kids. Again, I'm leaving on a happy place, I'm not leaving cranky or complaining or, you know, that. So I think that's what makes it so fulfilling for me. Um, and honestly, I just loved everybody um around and I am going to miss the collegiality. Um, but um, again, thank you, it's been wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Vivian, so much for everything you've done for our kids and for all of us as your colleagues.
Thanks.
So we do have a, we do have a comment, you, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, let's read that comment.
Okay, um, and I just also want to add, um, Vivian, you have just been such a delight to work with. And I have enjoyed every single interaction we have had, every conversation. Um, for, you know, someone who I, I hope that when I get to that point of retirement, that I also love, still love to learn. And that just, that is who you are and it's just your excitement and the way that you affect every child is just, is, is really magical. So thank you um for all that you've done. So this comment is from Lauren Loomis for Abbey Road. My son Hudson had Mrs. Capabianco last year and he loved being in her classroom every day and learned so much. Best wishes, Mrs. Capabianco, you will be so missed. Hudson is watching and is so excited to see you.
That's cute.
Thank you. All right.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to accept the retirement of Vivian Capianco with regrets?
O'Neil so moved, of course, with regret.
Get a second?
Star second.
And roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
Enjoy retirement. I'm jealous. Okay. Next up is possible vote to approve the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school calendar and second reading.
So the three versions were presented to you at your last meeting. You um informally decided to move drafts one and two forward. And so this evening, you have the opportunity to um take a look at them for a second reading and potentially vote on them.
So I do have one comment because I have favored draft two, which I still do. And I know some of the um counters to that was about the June um June tenth or Juneteenth holiday and returning after that holiday. If we have such, if we have five snow days. And I looked at our calendar this year, we are, have that exact same situation in this year's calendar. Where um the Monday, the nineteenth. Um, well, the nineteenth falls on a Monday, but if we have five snow days, they would come till the twenty-first. So that situation wouldn't be different. And I still favor the littles starting in a more consistent way right after the holiday weekend. That's just my two cents. I don't know if anyone else has a comment.
Well, I have to say, oh, sorry, Jen has her hand.
Go, no, go ahead, go ahead, Caroline.
You get your hand up first, you go first.
I, I'm always the one interrupting, so um um, I, I'm still leaning more towards one um because it, the start days are consistent with what we've done for the past few years, I believe. With staff starting on a Tuesday and, and students starting on a Wednesday. Um, Michelle, you know, I voiced my concern last week about kindergarten, starting on a Friday. And then they have a long, you know, three-day weekend and then starting back up on Tuesday. But um I could certainly be persuaded that that might be actually not a bad way for littles to start because they only have to go for one day, then they get a nice break and then they, they start the following week. Um, with, you know, they, they pick up with a four-day week and then don't have their first full week. Um, until really like the third, you know, after the second weekend they're in school. So I'm, I'm less concerned about that. I, I think the cadence of having the students start on Wednesday. You know, get, getting into Wednesday, Thursday, Friday has been helpful with it starting off the year and less choppy. You know, where you get in, the first day is kind of, you know, chaotic, then you only have one full day after that and then you're off for the weekend. But uh, uh, I'm not, it's not a hill I'm going to die on either way, just, just some of my thoughts.
Caroline?
So sorry, Michelle, I also uh favor the first draft, um mostly for all of the reasons that Jen mentioned. I do think that three days is like a nice period of time to kind of get all of those classroom rules in place and kind of an understanding of the, the culture of the classroom and so on. And then, you know, you hit the ground running after the holiday. So that is my preference. I'm like Jen, it's also not a hill I would die on. But on the other hand, I, I think that we're here to decide among us which uh version the majority of us prefer.
From, from the perspective of the, of um administration, um, these are so close that it honestly, either one would be fine, so um I can't help you with that. Um, I hear the arguments for both sides. Uh, it's, it's so close, however, um, that I think that's more of a concern if it were draft three, which you already ruled out. Um, it's so close that I don't think either one of these would have a set, a, a particularly detrimental impact on children. So I, I, while I greatly appreciate the thoughtfulness that you're putting into this, um, I don't want you to be concerned that if you choose one or the other, it will have a greatly you know, will greatly impact the kiddos, they'll, they'll be fine either way. Um, that's not very helpful, but I just wanted to let you know that we weren't sort of sitting here rooting for one or the other. It's, it's really completely up to you. But I don't want to feel badly if one's chosen over the other either, you know, it's, it's really, it's going to be fine.
I could also just point out one thing that um while the five days are built in to the calendar, if we have six snow days, we're still going to have to go past Juneteenth. So um, so I just wanted to throw that out there, you know. Hopefully, we don't have to, but um we have had years where that has happened.
It depends how long Christie's in charge next year.
Chrissy.
No, it's our snow day.
Nancy, um.
And again, there isn't a big difference between one and two, as you guys have mentioned. But I do like the idea that grades one through twelve will have three full days of school. And then, you know, the little ones, I get it, they come, but they're little, they can adjust their, you know. And it might be a good idea for them to go for a day and then think about it over the weekend and then come back. And um the way the snow has been, and I don't want to jinx anything, but you know, maybe we're on a good thing. Hopefully, it's not two thousand fifteen again, that's all, that's my concern.
People.
Huh?
Stop with the snow.
I, I, I don't, you know, I guess there's a big thing about tomorrow being cold and people are already concerned that they're going to send their kids to school in the cold. Like what, what is going on, what is wrong with you people? So just, you know, everybody needs to be in school tomorrow, school's are heated, although it's good.
Yes, we do caution people though to be, to, to know exactly what you're saying because they should be particularly mindful about how they dress their children for.
Right, absolutely. So I, I'm in favor.
Or recesses or anything like that, but certainly the bus stop is a concern.
Right. I'm in favor of um the uh first, the number one calendar draft.
You, you good, Jackie?
Yeah, I mean, I prefer number two for the reasons you said, Michelle, but I, I don't have really strong feelings either way, I'm good either one.
It's gonna be a close vote.
People do occasionally accuse us of always having majority, you know, unanimous votes, so maybe it's good to occasionally have a little difference of opinion, particularly on something so critical.
All right, are there any other differences here that anyone wants addressed before we vote?
Everything else was um was identical, I think, right? Except for just the, the beginning and end of the year. Yep. Yeah, yeah. And it looks like they, you know, you captured the, that half day in May is in here, um. Yeah, I think, I think Chrissy, you had led, had you led the charge on kind of capturing all the little edits we've done over the past couple of years? Yeah, yeah, I think, I think you captured everything. Knock on wood, um, but yeah.
Well, Lynn, Lynn, Suzie has had a great uh um, a role in that as well to make sure that everything was captured, so shout out to Lynn.
Okay, great. Well, good job on that.
All right, does someone want to make a motion, one way or the other?
Before we do, Michelle, could I just ask um Leisha and Christie, have you had any preference expressed by any of the principals or, you know, the building administrators?
The
Those two.
In our conversations with them about schedules, they have expressed a desire to start before the holiday. That has been clear and to have as much time before, you know, state testing and AP exams as possible. These are so close that I'm sure they'll be fine with either one of them. Like I said, the, the probably the most divergent was, was draft three and you already eliminated that one.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, does someone want to make a motion? Nancy?
I move that we choose draft one for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Got a second?
Second.
Go ahead. You got it.
All right, roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, no.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes.
All righty. Excellent.
I'm sorry, did you vote for number one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh vote to approve the school uh, the annual school committee's annual town report. Um, so this was added to your packet, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it ahead of time, we kind of just, we took what we had last year and updated it, got some um updated sports and music information and this was what we came up with. I don't know if there's comments, things you want changed, things you want added. It is due to the town by the fifteenth, so anything we might adjust, I would just need to do that by then. Jen?
Um, Michelle, I have one um small edit, which I apologize for not mentioning before. So um the first, the last paragraph of the first page, um you could just use star or Walsh with a space, it's not Walsh hyphen. But I think, I think just to be consistent, you can just use Jennifer Star.
Okay.
Michelle, I'd just like to compliment you. I know these reports are not easy. In fact, they're one of those things that I used to dread when January came, when I was chair two different times. So um I, I just, I think that's very comprehensive and you did a great job.
Well, thank you, and I had help from Jen, so.
Of course.
Not, not much, though, honestly, she, you give yourself credit, you covered Yes. Probably ninety percent of this, so.
Yeah. No, it's, it's really, I really appreciate, you know, you're putting that kind of effort in because it reflects well on all of us, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Michelle, I would like to reiterate that same thing as Caroline said, that these aren't easy to do. They take a lot of time and, you know, you're all over the place with different things, so good job, thank you very much. I think it's great.
Thank you. Anyone else? Are we good? All right, so can I get a motion to approve the school committee or the two thousand twenty-two annual report of the Eastern School Committee?
O'Neil, so moved.
I'm sorry.
Whoever said that something first should go with the
The Wiseman second.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yeah.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you. Public comment? Think there's any new?
No, there's nothing at this time.
Okay. Superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral.
Just a couple of things tonight, um as we are working, we're starting our, our budget process. Actually, the, the full-scale department portion of that, we've been talking about working on the budget ever since the beginning of the school year. Of course, we have a new finance director, Andrea, and she's reviewing everything, getting on board very quickly. Um, very sharp, very smart, very excited about working on this. We um are working, when are working, when I say that we're we're incorporating the entire school department, what we do is the same process we've been doing for the last several years is we spend the staff meetings in February and March. Usually January and February, we're a little bit behind. February and March focusing on the reactive, proactive and strategic needs of the district. We review the strategic plan. We review the school improvement plans and we the schools engage in a robust conversation on what it is, what resources and supports the staff feels that they need in order to bring those goals to fruition. That then gets reported back to the entire cabinet so that the leadership team of the district has an idea of pre K through twelve, what our most pressing needs are right now, as well as the upcoming needs that that we need to proactively address in the future. And then we put together a district prioritized proposal for a budget that we, of course, then present to you typically the the very beginning of April. We are also working on our capital budget right now. I will actually ask Lynn to put on the February sixteenth agenda, a preliminary review for you of our capital requests for this year. We are working on that right now. David is in all the buildings, looking at any facilities needs. We're talking about infrastructure, technology. We we are going to have our typical five year projection for you. And I would like to present that draft to you on February sixteenth for your consideration. And then finally, we you may be aware in the press that we have these cybersecurity issues that are going on very prevalent in schools right now. Nantucket missed school this week due to their ransom attack. Whitman Hansen had one at the beginning of the school year. They're they're very insidious and they're very disruptive. So we are working on beefing up our cybersecurity and as well as our cybersecurity insurance coverage. So I'm not going to get into details about that because, of course, there are some things we don't really want to share that we're doing, but the staff is going to be involved in a couple of changes to help make the system more secure so that hopefully, you know, we never know what's going to happen despite our best efforts, but we want to make sure we shore that up. So people are going to see some, on the business side of things, staff is going to see some very non-intrusive items coming up, but we're going to start pushing that out next week, actually, for their information. Little things that we're asking them to do, but they're actually part of our much bigger cybersecurity plan to keep everybody's information and work safe and secure. The only other thing I will mention is what was said previously, we are expecting literally Arctic-like temperatures, wind chills and wind gusts that we haven't seen in years. So of course, we're making our facilities preparations. We're having extra building checks done this weekend. It's anticipated to be tomorrow evening into Saturday, early evening. Temperatures with wind chill as low as thirty, thirty-five below zero. Wind gusts up to forty miles an hour potentially, that it is not a good combination to have that kind of cold and potentially lose power. So we're just, you know, a reminder for people to to power up, to get generators in order if they have them. But on our end of of things to just remind parents to make sure their children are layered up appropriately with clothing. This is particularly true of bus stops. We are going to be holding indoor recess, so the children won't be outside playing, but there is a frostbite warning that any exposed skin such as a face, even if everything else is covered up with hats and gloves and coats and scarves, could be frostbitten within fifteen minutes. So we just want to make sure that people are taking that very seriously. If they haven't been tuned in to the news or the weather reports, we just want to make sure that they're aware that it is a potentially very dangerous situation. You know, we're reminding people to check on their neighbors, check on their family members, particularly if anyone loses power. So just to be mindful of that. You know, we'll keep them indoors once they're at school, but sometimes it's it's very possible a student could be at a bus stop for approximately fifteen minutes or even longer, and we want to make sure that's not the case. And that if they need to be outside at all, that they every, everything is covered appropriately. And I've already alerted the not only the custodial staff, but the athletic staff, any outdoor activities. We just want to make sure that we are being very mindful of the students being outside, at least until Sunday. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Assistant superintendent notes, Chrissy?
Thank you. We are finishing up our audit on the scheduling with our, with New Solutions K through twelve company. We met, Leisha and I met with two of the consultants today. We will be meeting with the middle school and high school teams within the next few weeks to come up with some action steps on what what next, what's next with the outcome that they, the outcomes that they found. So I just wanted to kind of update you on the process of where we are with that. That we see an end to, that that's coming to a conclusion. And then our special education audit, again, by the same company, is also in the process right now. We have not met on the reporting and and their findings yet, but that will be coming soon. So the beginning of of the report out and all of that with the with Teresa Skinner, myself, Dr. Cabral, we will, that will be occurring within the next month or so. So I just kind of wanted to update you on that process. I was also going to tell you about the cybersecurity. Dr. Cabral was able to to go over that. That's okay. You did a great job. You did a much better job than I did, I would have done. So that's all I have for you at this time.
All right, thank you. School committee notes. Caroline, do you have anything?
No, nothing tonight.
Jackie?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Michelle.
All right, Nancy?
Just a reminder to folks, if you're interested in being on the the committee to name places in buildings, not naming the buildings, but naming the places in the buildings or outside of the buildings, you know, through donations or whatever. We have openings on our committee. The deadline is March fourteenth, I think, but I'd have to double check on that. And you can send your application to to me in my school committee address. You can find this application. It should be on the, I got to double check because I thought I put it into Eastern Town Cry, but I just looked earlier today and it wasn't there. So let me double check. Other than that, if you're a parent or a worker for Eastern Public Schools, you've gotten the application. And it's pretty easy anyway, but you could just email me if you want an application. I can send one to you. But all we do is we're going to come up with prices and places to be named and, you know, in all four schools, not just Blaine James or not just Oliver Ames High School. And the money goes towards those places or just into a general fund that helps, you know, keep, like the auditorium, for example, keeping the everything up and running. And I think that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
All right. Jen?
You going to talk about music?
Yes.
Okay, so for some other events happening, Ms. Shea, the art department head shared on Twitter this week a bunch, a gallery of photos of student artwork that had been submitted to and won Scholastic Art Awards. So the Scholastic Art Awards is a national art competition. Each state has its own awards process and they they award gold keys, silver medals and honorable, silver keys and honorable mentions, and the gold key winners are are considered for national awards. So let's see, so she shared, we OA students earned twenty-four awards, six gold keys, ten silver keys, and eight honorable mentions. I'm actually familiar with the process of submitting all of this stuff, and it's a tremendous amount of work for not only the students who are preparing the artwork, but for their teachers to go through the process of getting all of this artwork submitted. And thousands of students in the state participate in this. So it's it's such an honor and she, her students consistently, year after year, submit works to this and get recognized. And so follow, I think it's Paper, Paper Ms. Shea on Twitter, if anybody wants to go out and view some of these, some of this artwork. It's really, really impressive. So congratulations to the art department and to all of the students. And then I just wanted to note that I believe Eastern Wings of Hope sent some students to the CADCA National Leadership Forum in Maryland over the past weekend. I think they, I think they returned, I think they're returning today. So hopefully that was a fruitful trip and we look forward to to hearing about how it went and what their learnings are and what they can bring back to the community and and thank the students and all of the adults who support them and were able to help give them that incredible experience. And that's all I have.
All right, excellent. And I just, one little more shout out about the annual report. Jackie provided me with the Blaine James information and I neglected to say that at the time. I'm sorry, Jackie. You worked very hard at that. Okay, so since our last meeting, on January twenty-fifth, the RO winter concert happened, which was grade five band orchestra and chorus, and that was a wonderful night. It's just so fun to see the kids are so excited. It's their first time with their instruments, their first concerts. It's an event for a parent. I remember those.
I saw them present to their peers during the school day on before the concert that evening. And they were so engaged by their friends playing their instruments. And I have to say, not that they're not always good, but this year I actually grabbed Jeff Benson and said, this is a great crop of kids right here. They were very good. Really stood out this year.
And that's kind of a nice lead into an event happening this Friday on the third. It is, it used to be known as the dessert show, the Tempo dessert show, and then it was a dessert less show during COVID, coming out of COVID. And now it's just been re reimagined and it's going forward, going to be the Eastern Pops Winter Show sponsored by Tempo. And the nice thing about this event is, you know, you start with the RO groups and ensembles, and then they go into EMS and OA and the the Tempo show incorporates all the ensembles from EMS and OA, and you can really see the growth. And the way the program is set up, you first see image, which is the choir and dancing at EMS. And then you see the presentation by Panache and the pit band. So you kind of see where they're going. And then they do the same thing for the EMS Chamber Orchestra, and then they're followed by the OA Orchestra. So you can see that growth. And then there's two EMS jazz bands that's followed by the two OA jazz bands. And there's also the guitar ensemble, but that is only at the OA level. So that's a wonderful event. It'll be from six to nine at the auditorium at OA. So go check it out and see wonderful things are happening in the music department. And then there is another event on the seventh, the OA Triumph Karaoke Night. And they didn't have that when Sean was in Triumph, so I'm not really sure what that is, but sounds like it could be interesting. So that is from six to eight. And I could not get a location. I don't know if you know, Dr. Cabala didn't say if it was the auditorium or the cafeteria. Historically, it's been in the cafeteria at OA. So those are the upcoming music events.
It's
In the cafeteria.
OA cafeteria.
That's historically where it's been. So that's coming up. And that's all I have. Anything else? Okay. With that, because we are not coming back, our next regular meeting will be February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at five o'clock. And I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session and not to return to open session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining for paraprofessionals and SPEA, which is a custodial unit. Do I have a second?
Second, Luca.
All right, roll call vote.
O'Neil, yes.
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wesman, yes.
Star, yes.
All right, thank you. And Lynn, I don't remember seeing a link for that. Did anyone else see a link for that?
Yep, it's right after the one we got for this one. They came in right next to each other.
Okay.
On our email.
Thank you very much. I will see you there. Bye.
Good night.